Thank you for joining us this evening for the January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Monte Serena City Council regular meeting. Before this meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphones live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we're using Zoom to host the city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear the council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the neighbor, by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or on any agenda item, we are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to three hundred fifty words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to here to be typical three-minute timer. Only attendees in the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants using, participants calling in from the telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback from public timing. Lastly, because we are all not in the same room, all votes of this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. We can start with the pledge of allegiance. I requested the council member Liz Lawler to please lead us on the pledge.
All right, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have your microphones on mute.
Yeah, if you can, we, yeah, thank you. If you can go ahead with the roll call, please.
Councilmember
Present.
Councilmember Lawler.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Pratap Mecha.
Present.
And Mayor Ladi.
Present.
Yeah, before.
Thank you so much. And then I think we can take a matter out of the order. If you can go ahead and council member, I can make a check if you can introduce the police chief. Welcome police chief to our meeting. Thank you for taking the time to come here.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Officer Jamie Field as the new chief of police. The city of Monte Serena contracts with the town of LaScatos for police services. And police services are the single largest line item in our, in our annual expenditures. I know that the town of LaScatos conducted a comprehensive, competitive nationwide search and Officer Field was one of the several finalists. Our city manager, Steve Leonardi, participated in the search process and I'd like to thank Steve for that. On Tuesday, January the eleventh, the town of LaScatos announced Jamie Field was appointed as the new LaScatos Monte Serena Police Chief. I was delighted when I heard that Jamie was appointed and congratulated her immediately. Public safety is paramount in LaScatos. The desirability to live in LaScatos and Monte Serena is a function of our school system. Public safety, our parks and direct access to open space. With her thirteen years serving on our police force, Police Chief Field has a very deep knowledge of our community and a strong commitment to LaScatos Monte Serena Police Department. Police Chief Field is respected in our community and as she rose through the ranks here, Police Chief Field earned respect within Monte, LaScatos Monte Serena Police Department. Leadership and stability of LaScatos Monte Serena Police Department is exceedingly important and it starts with the chief of police. Police Chief Field, please accept our congratulations on your promotion. Finally, when you see Monte Serena on your badge and police vehicles, please know that the city of Monte Serena thanks you and your officers for your service.
Thank you. Well said. Mayor Pratap Mecha and Chief Field, would you like to say anything?
I would. Thank you so much, Monte Serena Council, for the warm welcome and the support. I am excited and absolutely eager to be the chief of police for LaScatos Monte Serena Police Department and to really lead such a great team of dedicated and committed individuals that make up our department. I really look forward over the upcoming years to listening to the public safety concerns and thoughts and presenting at future council meetings to, to any matters that may need to be addressed and supporting the community. So, thank you very much and we look forward to getting to work.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Does the public, anybody in the public have any comments? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. We'll go on to our next item. Are there any oral communications that are not related to any matters of the agenda? Not seeing any hands. We'll go to the next item, which is written communications. Are there any written com- I'm sorry.
Sorry, I did see a hand go up, but then it went down, so please ignore me.
Okay. See a hand up by Susan Ning has a hand up, I guess. My head turned out as a business, so these are matters that are not on the agenda. Miss Nick, if you'd like to go first, please.
Hello, hi, this is Susan's husband. I'm just using her computer. This is Phil. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I just like to talk about an issue which I've been trying to work with Steve Leonardi. Basically, I would urge the council to relook at your enforcement of construction hours. I was told by my neighbor yesterday that I've got a bad reputation around City Hall. They think I'm basically crying wolf all the time. I don't know if that's true or not, but our neighbor ran once again and the city hall helped us out with a flooding issue. But the neighbor once again had construction going on yesterday. If you're familiar with the holiday schedule, it is clearly not on, it is clearly not allowed on the schedule, so I have to, in effect, become the bad guy. It's just getting old. We're surrounded by construction. I think you're putting the residents in a bad situation. The option of using the police isn't realistic because people are not going to call the police. I solved it by myself. The neighbor was ready to strangle me. He had to send his contractors back to Hollister. I just think this is something that's being ignored and it's not going to get better with the increased pressures on construction. I brought it up several times, at least, I think, believe I copied several of the council members. I just feel that folks are ignoring it. It's easier just to ignore it and let everybody deal with it. I might add that when the construction was going on yesterday, as good as and as much as I admire the LaScatos police, they drove by all the construction vehicles, no one stopped. I'm not even sure they're told to stop, but there's obviously not on their horizon. My suggestion, which I've suggested many times, is this is not going to get fixed. It's, it's an issue in the morning. It's not an issue at the night because these guys are under a lot of pressure to build. I understand that. My suggestion is to do random audits before eight o'clock. I don't think there is any other solution. I've suggested it many times. I think it falls on deaf ears. I see no other way to do it. I would, I, I just don't think it's real. If you guys really want to enforce the rules you're put in place, I think you have to do a random audit and try to enforce it with a warning or two. It was ironic yesterday, the neighbor that I got to stop happens to be an attorney and he said I was being legalistic and I was being very basically he was claiming to me I sounded too much like the lawyer, but the lawyer was ignoring the rules from the city. So, in conclusion, I would just like to enforce the fact this is going to keep on going up and up as an issue. You can't ignore it. You can't expect the citizens to enforce it. It isn't right to call the police every time. That's crazy. These are neighbors. And I think a viable solution, which seems to be being ignored, I've made, made it several times, is to have a city representative do random audits periodically and enforce it accordingly and make sure that the folks in construction know that the random audits are going to happen. It's the best way I can suggest for QA. I really appreciate it and thank you for serving on the council. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll certainly take a look at it and see how we can publicize the construction hours and everything else and whatever else may need to be done. Next on the list is Mr. Turner. If you could go ahead. Is Mr. Turner there?
Seems like his microphone is on mute.
You're on mute, Mr. Turner. Okay, I guess he's no longer there. Well, I guess he's back. Go ahead, Mr. Turner. Can you hear us? And you're on mute. All right, I guess we can get back to him later on when he's available. So, the next item that we have is presentations. Are there any presentations?
No presentations.
Okay, no presentations. We've gone through oral communications, written communications. We're into the consent calendar. Does anybody need to, want to pull any item from the consent calendar? That's items one to here, I believe. Don't hear anybody. I've, I've got a few questions on some of these items on the consent calendar. So, let me see if I can go forward with that. And rather than pulling them up, I'll just ask the questions and move on. So, on item number two on the warrant list, there is a couple of questions I have. One, one, if Mr. Somar is available, that'd be good. There's an item on US sixty-six eighty-three. Is that the last payment that we're making to our previous AI person? All right, the person is running the internet and IP.
No, it's, no, it's not mayor. There's another there's probably future invoices from EOS integration, only because we have our telephone office telephone system with him.
Is that something you're going to be looking at? See, I'll let you figure it out. It's better to leave it there or that needs to be changed. And this is for, what month was the sixty-six eighty-three? That's for November or October?
It's for the current, for December.
That's for December.
Through December.
Okay. Then, then you have another item on same page. I think that's Fargo Bank, the city council expenses of six thousand one hundred and sixty-eight. And I started to figure out if you can break that down because it's, these are expenses by one of our council members and they need to be listed under the person's name, so that
Yeah, I should have expanded on that category. It actually includes travel, travel expenses.
For who?
But let's see, let me go back to the supporting documents.
And I'll be submitting expense either. I'd rather have it openly listed so that, you know, it's not buried somewhere. And council members also have to basically waive conflict. I mean, there's an item on the agenda that they're approving, so it needs to be transparent.
Yeah, let's see, it's a it was a actually it was a forty dollar charge to get my better glasses here, to athmec.com. So, it's a subscription service, forty, forty dollars.
Yeah, we have a six thousand one sixty-eight expense, so how much of that council and how much of it is not, I guess is the question.
Yeah, so the bulk of that expense is almost five thousand related to office furniture. We bought up and down desks for the office.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So, if you can just separate them out, so we don't get a mix up on whether it's a council expense or a furniture expense, because you could list the furniture as a furniture expense.
Okay, I can be, put more detail in the description.
Yeah, please. Please, council member expenses should definitely be separated and listed under the council member's name.
Okay.
So, we can waive conflict and, you know, and provide transparency.
I will do that.
Thank you, sir. I had a question on item number five, which is the, except, the revenue expenditure to support. The construction permits are like five hundred thousand dollars. Fees on that, according to my number. But I was curious whether those are just for new constructions or existing housing construction that's going on. This is for November, right?
Yes, this is for November.
Yeah, this is four hundred and five thousand, four hundred and six dollars. Is that for new construction or?
That's actually the year-to-date number, mayor. You're looking at the ninety-two thousand for the month.
Okay.
And so, let's see, I believe I captured the bulk of those revenue items. Let me refer to the commentary, the narrative. Just one minute, please.
It was on page three, zero, one, dash, two, thirty-six.
So, for the given month, on the license and permit activities, in November, it was led by construction permits submitted by properties on Seaborn Court, twenty-four thousand. Eaton Lane, about four thousand, and Viewfield Road, about three thousand.
Yeah, and, and the reason I'm bringing it as up is because I know Monte Serena has probably the lowest permit fees, especially for new construction and all the noise that they're creating. You know, maybe this is something we need to look at because I understand Los Gales and Saratoga have a much higher permit for new construction, talking about just new construction, not existing ones. So, that's maybe you guys want to take a look at it, but maybe Mr. Leonardi wants to take a closer look at that and see if you're competitive because the construction does a lot of, lot to our road traffic and messes up our streets and everything else.
So, to be clear, you want us to look at potentially increasing the rates on our permits?
Yeah, take a look at it, see if you're competitive and what is it actually costing us because fees, rates have to be based on what actually costs the city. So, if you can justify it and not have to pass on the construction cost to everybody else of maintaining roads and all that, that thing that may be worth looking at.
Okay, we'll do that, mayor.
Thank you. And, and also this is the city council, so you can pitch in when you guys do that as to where we're going. The other question I had was on page five. You have, I think we had, we had a deficit this month of about three point nine percent on the revenue expenses and all that. That's a page five of eleven. Is, is that something that's going, one time or are we going to be seeing more deficits?
Actually, on page five, we had a twenty-six thousand dollar gain or surplus for the month.
Yeah.
Year-to-date basis, one oh two.
Yeah, your, your, your debt basis
It's a hundred and three, hundred and three thousand a surplus on a year-to-date basis.
Yeah, I'm just looking at your minus three point nine percent at the end of that row.
Oh, yeah, that's comparing what we have in the budget, because in the budget, we do have a deficit. We are, we will be drawing from our reserves and so to that end, we are ahead actually significantly.
All right, good. I understand that. And then on the left report, item six, I didn't see any income received from any of the money we have in the banks. I know that's
Yes. Yeah, the bulk of the, the monies from life comes in arrears. So, for the month and for the quarter ending December thirty-first, we should recognize that or the, the income will be recognized in January of this month. In fact, that, before this meeting, I checked to see if it was posted. Usually it comes out on the eighteenth-ish, so probably by later on this week, it should be posted. But I suspect it'll be the same amount as last time.
All right. Finally, item seven. I wanted to actually congratulate the city engineer and the staff and actually the city council also. But this is the projects on LaRum Canada, which was originally budgeted for one million six hundred and seventy thousand nine seventy-five and then when council went into it, split the project up into two separate projects, one for Zina and one for Clara and Tally. And instead of spending one million six seventy to Great Tech, which had, which had originally been given the contract or was going to get the contract, the city only spent one million one hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. So, as a result, the city saved four hundred and ninety-three thousand nine twenty-two. So, I think we, we need to take a bow on that, the city council and the staff and the engineers also did a great job on it. So, thank you for doing that. And then I, and I don't have any other comments. So, with all those, if, if anybody else has any questions on any of these consented agenda items, could I ask? If not, I'll ask the public if they have any questions on any of the agenda items and all the consent items from one to eight. And I see Mr. Turner's hand up. I assume it's from the previous thing, so I will go ahead and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second, anybody?
I can.
All right, so a motion, if you can go ahead and call the roll, please.
Motion by Mayor Pratap Mecha with a second by Councilmember Turner, Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Councilmember Luton.
Beside me?
No, I just remember Luton.
Let's go with that.
Perfect. Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Pratap Mecha.
Hi.
And Mayor Ladi.
Hi, thank you.
And that motion passes by zero.
Great. If Mr. Turner still wants to speak, this is, I guess, in between, we can go ahead and take that up.
I would like to. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, please.
Okay, I think we had a computer problem there. I'm, I, I want to disclose that council member Rowena Turner is my wife, okay? I'm sure that many of you have seen the newspaper articles printed over the last couple of days touting my family's so-called illegal voting at our home in Oregon. I want to talk about that. I want to talk about who placed those articles and I want to talk about why they were placed. We have owned a home in Oregon for over twenty years. We spend a lot of time there. We have friends there. We pay property taxes there. We contribute to the local community. Eventually, we expect to retire there. We are as much a part of that community as we are of our Monte Serena community. And we have voted in local elections there for as long as we have owned the home. We have voted on property taxes, which we pay on school and fire district issues and so on. We don't vote on anything that is on the ballot in California, any national issues. We only vote on local stuff. And we have always believed that to be perfectly legal. We have never voted twice in any election. We have never double-voted. We have never voted for the same candidate in two elections. If we had owned property in Arizona or Nevada or any of more than forty other states, it would, this would have never become an issue. But Oregon has an obscure regulation that says if you're registered in Oregon, you can't be registered in another state. We didn't know about that. But a group of people, council members, formal council members, who are determined to drive my wife off this council, hired an investigator to dig up dirt on my family that could be used against Rowena. They discovered this regulation and Mr. Mecha Chuck contacted the Oregon Secretary of State and insisted that they prosecute Rowena and our whole family. Mecha Chuck was especially insistent because, as he said, he had an election coming up. So, that led to our being prosecuted. We certainly owe you a lot, Mr. Mecha Chuck. Oregon charged us with what they call a violation. In California, it would be called an infraction. It is not a crime. It has a weight similar to a traffic ticket. We pled no contest. We were fined four hundred and forty dollars. We didn't know about this regulation. We accepted the court's decision and we paid the fine. Our attorneys told us this regulation was probably unconstitutional. Similar regs in other states have been declared unconstitutional. Taxation without representation issues. But we chose not to spend a year of our time and probably a hundred thousand dollars fighting it. We chose to pay the fine and accept it. That should have been the end of it. But now, Mr. Mecha Chuck has caused an article in Oregon to be printed and others here in San Jose. They can't let this go. I don't have time now to go into details, but I expect to come back again and I will talk in detail about who did this and why. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I see some other hands up. There is Maria Lee. If you would like to address, and I guess we're talking about things that are not on the agenda. Go ahead. Miss Lee.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much for the time. I am here for Rowena Turner. I know she's a very integrity woman. I like her. I respect her. And it is just so shameful of that man, Mecha Chuck, of what he did just to let go of the competition. I remember when we were doing class president, that's what we did, but you guys are grown up now. Shame on you.
Thank you, Miss Lee. Let's see, we are done. Next is Jennifer.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I would just like to ask you to not go against the will of the voters. We support Rowena Turner and we need Republican voices in the council. Thank you.
Yeah, just for the record, that matter is not on the agenda, so we're not discussing it even. So, but, but you feel free to express your opinions on, and these are opinions for matters that are not on the agenda. Next, we have Ms. Jane Sewell. See if I'm pronouncing it right.
I assume you can hear me. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I had the opportunity to look through the letters that Councilman Mecha Chuck wrote to the election officer in Oregon and it was a series of letters begging him to please find something defined something about voter fraud against Councilman Turner. To me, it seemed like a witch hunt. And we have so much division in our, in our country. I really find it unbelievable that somebody would try to make a case against a woman, against an immigrant and against an Asian. I, I think that Councilman Mecha Chuck owes Councilman Turner a, an apology. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Then we have Brandon. Again, this matter is not on the calendar. It sounds like you guys want it to be put on the calendar. Maybe we can consider having it formally discussed as an agenda item at the next meeting so that everybody can address it. But go ahead, Brendan. I, I wasn't going to put it on, but it sounds like there's a lot of interest in this matter. Maybe we need to do that. Brendan, go ahead. Okay, it looks like Brendan is occupied. We can always go back then. Dawn, if you can go ahead. Okay, sorry, Katie. You got all right.
Okay, hi there. Yeah, I just got the unmute button. It wasn't clear how you get connected. Yeah, so I am a member of this community and I, I as well was reading about this story and I'm appalled that someone would go on a witch hunt like that and take a decent, hard-working citizen who wants to serve her community and take her to task on something as minor, as an infraction that she wasn't even aware she was doing. Are we not in this country to the place where we are innocent until found guilty? And then when we are found guilty, we pay our dues, we pay our fines, we serve our time. She paid the fine. The infraction was restituted and she's no longer going to be violating that ordinance or law or whatever it is. And at the same time, I hope that someone's going to work on the constitutionality of that because I can see where it'd be very easy to think you're doing the right thing by just voting on the local issues and not. I can see myself doing the same thing and maybe a number of you also have properties and you were fortunate to have them in a, in a state where it's not against the law. So, I just want to express my support for her and thank her for her So I just want to express my support for her and thank her for her service and I'm sorry that she's had to go through this and I agree that an apology is warranted and and it was a little difficult just to tell you for me to figure out how to get on and there's no indication that you're waiting for an unmute button. So you guys might want to just add a little something to your notes. I needed to speak here and I just want to support her and, and the work that she's doing and I'm glad to see that you guys have an open forum. I applaud you and I'm very happy to see you say the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of the meeting. So thank you very much and thank you all for your service.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Katie, Katie Imamura. Let's go ahead, Mr. Imamura.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak and the previous speakers as well. I totally agree with all that has been said regarding Rowena Turner. And I think it's really sad to see this happening, even within communities that were trying to make a difference. And for people that step up to run for office, I applaud them because that's brave to do that, all of you that have done that and taken time. But to have this happen to this woman is not right and it's not appropriate. And I just hope that this could be resolved and that there is some soul searching here for, for the ones that are involved with this. And I'm sorry that her family has had to deal with this as well. And, and I agree with what a speaker said spoke. So thank you for taking, letting me, I appreciate it. And I agree about the pledge of allegiance for that, for our country. Again, thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, for the record, this matter is not on the agenda. We were not planning on discussing it. There was a discussion in this matter back in October twenty twenty. And as far as the council is concerned, that was the end of the matter. But if you all want us to be put back on the formal calendar, we can do that next time. Ms. Nick, if you would like to go ahead and say anything. This might be your husband, I guess.
Hi, is that me? You're calling out Susan Ng?
Yes, please.
Hi. First of all, Happy New Year to all four members, five council members.
Thank you.
And I want to jump straight into it. First of all, I don't understand why Mr. Mecha Chuck, why are you pursuing this? And may I know who is actually financing you to pursue this? Third, I really applaud Rowena Turner because she has been duly and lawfully elected by us. And, you know, elections are never going to be, you know, someone will win, someone will lose. So stop the steal, seriously. Go for, you know, just go out and campaign on what you believe in the issues. This city is a very small city. We cannot be so divided. We don't have that many issues. Life is too short. I don't know why, why Mr. Mecha Chuck is doing this. Maybe he's been misled or misguided. I wouldn't have anything against you, Mr. Mecha Chuck, but please do not divide this little city in order to win an election. This is really a small part of your life. You're passing a very, 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 very bad message. Why would people run for office? I've been approached to run for the city council. I would not do this. I don't want to put my family. I don't even know how. I really respect the Turner family for putting up with this. If I have the money and the time, I would sue the whole city council and who actually financed this kind of witch hunt? She hasn't done anything legally wrong and I have a question to the city council attorney. Has Ms. Turner done anything illegal, unlawful, that basically need to be investigated into? Do not circumvent elections. Our elections are true and fair. Whoever wins, so be it. Whoever lost, run again. But please don't take a vendetta just to win in a little city council meeting. Life is too short, right? Rowena, we are all behind you. And if you're up for election again, we will run and we will stand united behind you. This is my message. Please do not divide this city council. We have to work together. Seriously, guys, just run a fair elections. Don't try to steal. Don't try to circumvent, to overthrow Rowena from the council where she is duly and legally elected. Thank you.
Yeah, once, once again, I repeat, there is no motion before us to do anything with Mr. So I'm sure she appreciates the support you're giving her. Next is Celia. Lily?
Yes. Mr. Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Celia Lu. I'm a local resident here in Santa Clara County. I'm calling in to implore Councilmember Brian Mecha, Mecha Chuck to stop creating a hostile work environment at the city council and specifically stop harassing Councilmember Rowena Turner. You risk giving a bad name to public servants when you continue smear campaigns from the campaign trail into your elected position. We taxpayers are not paying you to harass your political opponents. Once you are elected, we expect you to work together for the good of Montessorino. So please stop your harassment, stop the news stories, and stop wasting our time and money on political attacks. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And next we have Brendan again. If you would like to speak, Brendan. I'll skip that again. Rupa Shaker, you're next.
Thank you, Javid. Usually we start off by saying respectful mayor, respectful council members. Now today I would like to start you, start off by saying, guys, just stop this. You all have this position because citizens voted, you guys. This is becoming too silly. We voted you all so that you can benefit, you can contribute to the growth of the city. But this is becoming too silly that I feel like I'm sitting in the kindergarten class. Brian, high time. You need to grow up. Too silly and it's not even worth my time to be telling you, to put you in place to say, please don't act that way. Javid, you are saying that this is not on the agenda, but you are not addressing the issue in hand. Sean, listening to this and you're not addressing the issue in hand. Liz, you're listening to this and you're all bystanders. I want an upstanding council members. I kindly request you all to please grow up and do the right thing. This is just not working. This is picking just on one person for no reason. And I, I see no upstanders, but just bystanders. I want Brian, if, Javid, if you want to put something on the agenda, I kindly request for Brian to come back and give an explanation as to what he did and why he did. And if there is data tracking back to him, I would expect Sean and Javid and Liz to address this. And I'm telling you guys that you guys are any other citizens like us. Just because you guys are sitting in the council number doesn't mean that you should override anything and rule over the citizens the way you guys are. I kindly request you to please take on the responsibilities that you took oath on. This is not working for us. We don't want you to waste our city council meeting times like this wherein the city, city citizens have concerns and we are not being heard. And the reason, Javid, you're asking us to stop talking, we're not going to stop talking until this, the root cause is solved, issue is resolved. It's not going to get resolved. These things are going this way. I have last hope and I'm losing hopes day by day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaker. Uh, next is Mr. Solomon, Benjamin Solomon. Let's go ahead, Mr. Benjamin Solomon. I think you're a moot.
Okay. I presume most of you are Democrats. The, the electorate is basically fifty percent Democrats, twenty-five percent independents and twenty-five percent Republicans. And if you are getting rid of, trying to get rid of a Republican, you are discriminatory. And if you want to talk about identity politics, we can do that as well. But I will end with this. Lord said, those who have not sinned, cast the first stone. Please be careful what you do because the Lord is watching. Over.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Mingi Budain, I hope I'm saying the name correctly. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So the, the whole situation, the constitutionality of this issue is questionable. And Mrs. Turner's is a law-abiding, abiding citizen in both Oregon and California. She even paid a fine for the law she wasn't even aware of in Oregon. I'm so proud of her. Um, and I'm proud of her to even serve in a city. Um, so, um, Mr. Mecha Chuck is, is they basically doing witch hunt and his intent is really a bad precedent for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Brad. Right, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Members of City Council. Thank you for allowing the public to speak. I agree with all of my previous speakers, especially Celia and Ms. Ng. Uh, I think you all were voted to do the city's business. Please focus on that. Please do not set a precedence by what Councilmember Brian had, has done. This could happen to either, either one of you. Councilmember Liz, Councilmember Sean and Mr. Mayor. So I would be careful about setting a precedence. Again, I'm hoping the voters, Brian, if you're up for reelection, I hope the voters are looking at this council meeting because I think they're going to start wondering who they're voting for. So again, uh, I want to thank Councilmember Turner for complying with the laws, paying her fine, paying her dues and focusing on the city's business. Again, uh, you all were voted to do a, a job here for the city of Montessorino. I expect you to do that. The voters expect you to do that and to have this internal political witch hunt is ridiculous. And again, just to reiterate, this is why good people do not want to run for office. They're looking at this council meeting and just shaking their heads. So please, please do not cause further damage by having any further discussion on this matter. Thank you and have a good evening and Happy New Year.
Thank you. And I have B. If you want to go ahead and speak.
No, I think you have me again. I, I already spoke. Thank you.
Okay, so you, you, you're done as B also? All right, good. If you can take that off. Yeah, I think Brendan is just a line item that stays there, but if there's really a Brendan out there, please go ahead. Want to say anything? You're not on mute, Brendan. All right, doesn't sound like that person is going to speak. Is there anybody else who wants to address the council? If not, I'll bring it back.
There is one more hand, Kingsley Barrett.
Yeah, please go ahead, Kingsley Barrett.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just came here from New York. And I'm a teacher and I'm just listening to this. I don't know much about it. I did look up Brian's background. He's from Canada, became a citizen in two thousand nineteen. So he's an immigrant himself. Uh, why he would go after an Asian female? An immigrant? I really don't understand, but if he was in my classroom, I would give him a timeout and he'd have to write an essay on the reason he is trying to divide the city council. It, it's not. I don't think it has anything to do with this Oregon stuff I'm listening to. And I think he needs to contemplate and write a three hundred and fifty word essay and hand it to us as to what his reasoning is. This is appalling. You guys are grownups. You're not in my fourth grade class. And I don't believe you actually care about Rowena Turner, but we do. And we will unite and we would like it on the agenda. It seems as if you are purposely not putting it on the agenda and you are inclined to keep it off the agenda. So could you do me a favor? And since we are the constituents and as I said, I just got here and I'm eager to see what goes on. And so far, I am extremely disappointment. Uh, disappointed, excuse me. My expectations have not been met. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to address council? If not, uh, this matter was not on the agenda. So this has been just a discussion that happens for people who want to discuss anything for any matter that's on, not on the agenda. So we're back to the motion to approve the consent calendar. And I think we had a second on that. We were about to take a roll call.
We already took the roll call vote.
So we're done with that, right? Okay. So now we move on to the next item. Which is unfinished business part.
We actually have a public hearing on the weed abatement program.
Okay, yes, go ahead. So the next item is a public hearing on the twenty twenty-two weed abatement program. Do we have a staff report? Mr. Leonardo, if that's you who's going to be giving the report, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As annually we do this, we conduct a public hearing for our annual weed abatement program. And it was required that the council adopt a resolution overruling objections from those in the public, if any, and determining to proceed with the weed abatement. Essentially, we're giving them a public notice and of their right to object. And we are available for questions and or comments from council at this time.
Is there any?
Resolution is attached and, and so is the weed abatement letter from the county program.
Great, thank you, sir. Are there any questions from council of the city manager? If not, I'll go to the public. Are there any questions from the public on this particular item? Are there any hands raised on this item?
I do not see any hands raised on this item.
All right, I guess I'll bring it back to council. Do we have a, any discussion or if not, do you have a motion to approve the weed abatement program?
Second, please.
All right, so I think you have a motion and a, by Councilmember Lawler and second by Councilmember Turner. Was that you?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call this.
Okay, Councilmember Lucio. Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor for town, Mecha Chuck?
I.
And Mayor Wang.
Yes.
And that motion passes by zero.
Thank you. So then we go to the unfinished business. And the first one, first item on unfinished business has to do with the adopting the objective design standards as an addendum to the design guidelines as recommended by the site and architecture committee. So staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. This is Diana Perkins. I am the city planner. And I'll provide a summary of the recommendation for the objective design standards. And then turn things over to Tom Ford from the M Group, who was our consultant in preparing the draft document tonight. And he will provide a summary of the development of the standards, the proposed standards. Um, so the standards were for you tonight and the modifications made based on the comments provided by the Site and Architectural Commission. At their January fifth meeting, the commission recommended that the city council approve the objective design standards with modifications to allow chain link fencing at sports courts, require replacement trees to be twenty-four inch box in size, and that the objective design standards only be applied to projects where state law prohibits the use of subjective standards such as accessory dwelling units over eight hundred square feet and the SB nine on units for the new regulations that were recently adopted. Um, these modifications are included in the draft document before you tonight. The Site and Architectural Commission also recommended that in six months, staff review these standards and how they're working and how the implementation is going. And provide an update to the commission and the city council, along with any recommendations for adjustments that may be needed. And provide an update to the commission and the city council, along with any recommendations for adjustments that may be needed. Um, and lastly, the commission recommended that a monthly report be provided to them noting the applications that have been received for accessory dwelling units or new units that would be submitted under the SB line regulations. So that concludes the recommended action for tonight. And now I'll turn it over to Tom Ford to provide a summary on the development of the standards.
Good evening. This is this is Tom. I'm going to try to share my screen. Okay. Good evening. Good, Happy New Year. Glad to be back. You've seen a previous version of this, as Ms. Perkins just mentioned in her staff report. I just want to real briefly touch on some of the issues that we clarified through the process of working at a couple of come meetings with the architect, Site and Architectural Commission. So uh, real briefly, I just have a few slides about fifteen fourteen. Want to talk about the project goals, remind you why we did this. I'll show you the timeline and outreach. We're basically at the end of the timeline. The outreach that we conducted with the community and then touch on some of those key, those key issues that were alluded to in the staff report. So if you'll remember, um, you have documented the design guidelines. That's what you've been using for your discretionary review, both the Site and Architecture Commission and then the council as you review projects and they come forth. What the objective standards is doing is responding to state law and showing that there are objective standards for certain kinds of projects. So where you used to, on the left side of the screen, sort of outlines the discretionary review where the site and architecture and the city council can review a project. But the objective standards will do now is put in place a series of objective very measurable standards for ministerial review of projects. And the consistency with these standards will be what development projects coming forward will have to adhere to. So the timeline, we started back in the spring. Went through a few meetings. We had a community forum, met with an ad hoc committee. And now, um, after it got kind of intense down here at the end with a lot more meetings and shuffling back and forth of drafts and documents and through this process, we're now here tonight asking the council to consider these standards for adoption. Once tonight's meeting, assuming that you do go forward and adopt them, our office will then make any recommendations that you might direct us to do, and we will put a final document in the city's hands. So with regard to community engagement, there was a website. It it got a lot of traffic. It didn't generate a lot of new email addresses. So we didn't develop, uh, we we invited people to leave their email address. We tended to get the word out with the city's typical methods for contacting people for meetings just because the list that we had didn't, uh, wasn't a a real robust one. Uh, we had an online poll, um, asking people to talk us, talk to us a little bit about what they, their desire for what buildings should look like residential development. As I mentioned earlier, there was a community forum. We met uh at least once, I believe, with um the ad hoc committee, the city council ad hoc committee. Excuse me. And then you had um the joint study session with the Site and Architectural Commission. And then we did a number of review sessions with them, as I said. Um, as I've been saying all along, as I've met with either you or the Site and Architectural Commission, a lot of what we heard from your community was a desire to see ways that we could objectively put in place standards for protecting privacy, particularly from second floor vantage points and adjacent properties. And then another issue that came up through the through the outreach process was trying to do things to make the architecture more interesting. Make sure that we found ways to get variable facades, uh, variable treatment of those facades so that there was a a good amount of architectural quality and architectural detail. If you look at the the design guidelines, almost all of them are a good, good amount of them, we were able to objectify or find a way to supply the design guidelines with objective criteria, which allowed them to be a standard. There were a few cases where we couldn't do that. So for instance, on the left, you'll see some of those. Writing an objective standard to maintain neighborhood character is very difficult to do in an objective way. A lot of things relating to setbacks or height, the water conservation, lot coverage, things like that are already addressed in the city zoning code. Some of the real specific architectural nitty gritty details get real style specific. So in a document that's trying to broadly go across three different residential zoning districts such as you have, it's kind of hard to do that without really sort of impairing, if you will, an architect or 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 an applicant's level of uh design flexibility. Views is a thing that comes up a lot. It's really hard to try to find a way to objectify it without a a view or a like a view ordinance in place already in the community. And then um solar issues such as sun and shade, those are just, again, hard to make an objective standard that applies uniquely or not uniquely, but it applies to all the parcels across a development zone. So some, I just want to touch a little bit on what we did to try to address some of those privacy concerns. So for instance, in the document, C two point five talks about window sill height. And that for parcels that are for buildings that are within fifteen feet of the rear side or rear parcel line, that the upper floor windows have to have a sill height of forty two inches. It doesn't, um, it doesn't necessarily obstruct completely viewing out of that window, but it at least makes it a little bit harder for somebody to actually have to to get that view. The other thing we did was try to offset windows. So for instance, when there's an existing building, as you see here on the left, the ground plant, the floor plan of a existing building on the left, a new building comes along, they would be obligated, if they're within twenty feet, that they can't align their windows directly. So they would have to find an offset. Now, in working with the uh Site and Architectural Commission, we actually added a caveat to this one, and that's underlined at the bottom, that any window that's sort of a clear story height sixty inches or above would be exempt from that offset. If you'll recall, I think it was right at the end of December, um, we were talking about the SB nine ordinance and the issue of what the Site and Architectural Commission had already seen came up. And there was this issue about how this forty five degree plane. And I want to be clear, this, we're not including this any longer. We have dropped this for reasons I'll explain. But because one of the council members had a specific suggestion about this, we wanted to follow up and show you what we did. So this is the way it was written, that there would be a forty five degree plane that would come from the ground plane. And we took some of your, um, some of your R one eight lots that are actually a little bit lower than the zoning code allows. The zoning specification per lot width on an R one eight is seventy. But you have a series of parcels in that, in a little neighborhood adjacent, somewhat adjacent to the school that are getting down to like sixty, sixty two, sixty five feet wide. So we, we, we put a little building envelope on there using the first floor setback, second floor setback. And then we threw the forty five degree plane and you know, you could still do something in this twenty feet here, but it is pretty limited. And as I said, we we've dropped this, but we wanted to show you what we did. Now, at of the council meeting in December, one of the council members suggested that we try a sixty degree plane. As you can see, there's a little bit of of help, if you will, but it doesn't really create much. And so I just wanted to point out that when we started working on this specific standard, it was prior to us really seeing how your SB nine ordinance was going to shape up. And your SB nine ordinance, which if you'll recall, an SB nine parcel can have a four foot setback. And so that's what we are really trying to do. And since it would be four foot setback all the way up, this could have been something nice. However, your ordinance went forward and said that anybody that uses less than what the zoning code predicts for a a side setback is not allowed to even have a second floor development. So we decided, working with staff, to actually just drop this from consideration. So it's not in the the version that you'll see tonight or that you're reviewing tonight. So just real quickly, a few other issues. As Ms. Perkins mentioned, the purpose statement coming out of the last site and architectural review, they were responding to a community member and then they had their own discussion. And they asked us to clarify that the the objective standards will only apply to ministerial projects, projects that are subject to either ministerial or streamlined review. One of the Site and Architectural Commission members had asked us to try to regulate glare coming from solar panels, and we looked into it quite a bit. We we actually tackled it from a different angle, trying to see if there was any way to regulate roof color or reflectance value. And there's a lot of subjective guidelines out there, but there wasn't really anything that we could use as a model to really try to figure out how you could even explore that. And in California, as you probably know, it's really difficult to try to you know, dissuade solar use on any property. Landscape screening, uh, as a response to the last meeting, uh, we we reduced the minimum size that was specified for landscape screening between parcels and then the fence materials. The fence materials at the last meeting, we didn't allow, we didn't create this caveat for sports courts. But the Site and Architectural Commission discussed it a little bit. It wasn't unanimous, but they asked us to go ahead and say that chain link is allowed where it's used specifically to enclose a a sports court. So what what we can do tonight is be available, and we are for any questions or conversation, discussion, and we're asking you to adopt or to at least consider for adoption a resolution that will add these as some and an addendum to your existing design guideline document. And I thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on council have any questions for Mr. Ford? Or for the staff? Very complicated sets of uh objective design, but it looks like a lot of work has gone into implementing them. And I commend the planning staff and the S and A and support for providing us something that, you know, is understandable. I mean, it's kind of difficult to flow through all that. But uh, it looks like it's been well thought off and well thought out. Uh, and Mr. I cost the report, McCauchack has a question. Please go ahead.
Thank you. It looks like uh you spent a lot of time on this and I commend the Site and Architectural Commission for doing so. And so this is coming back to us as a recommendation for approval. Is is that correct? And what was the the vote of the Site and Architectural Commission in recommending this? Was it, were all of them in favor of it?
Yes, um, to both of your questions, I guess. Um, yes, this is before you tonight to consider adopting a resolution to approve the standards. And the Site and Architectural Commission vote was five to zero to approve it with the recommendations included in the staff report.
Thank you.
Councilmember Luthol, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just had one question. I believe I saw that there is a prohibition on vinyl windows. I'm wondering what the basis for that is in either architecture or guidelines. Personally, I've seen many a vinyl clad window and a painted window and couldn't tell them apart. So why would we want to prohibit vinyl glad vinyl windows? And would it prohibit vinyl clad windows? Or is this something different?
I'll I'll take that. This is Tom Ford. Uh, thank you. It actually started, that standard started out a little bit different. There was no mention of of vinyl. And what we were trying to do is talk, we listed a whole series of materials that would be allowed. And in discuss, in discussing that at an earlier meeting, not the most recent, the Site and Architectural Commission said, well, rather than that, let's just say what we don't want. And so they basically said vinyl. I assumed that by the by the discussion, it was vinyl or vinyl clad. Now, there's been other opinions that vinyl works fine. I I've seen, if it's not a good quality, I've seen that it doesn't look good. But materials have changed a lot. So it's, 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 I'm not completely convinced, but that's where, that's the history of how we evolved, where we got.
I guess my comment on that, uh, which I'll go ahead and get out of the way here is Anderson Windows Medium High End has a vinyl clad window, which is essentially some of their high quality. Um, and of course, there are terrible junk vinyl windows that fail and cause problems for homeowners, which I think is what was trying to be addressed. But I don't think there is a way to address the quality of the vinyl window. And I just wonder if we're getting into micromanagement here. So I'm just putting that out there. We can come back and discuss that further when we get to council discussion later on. Thank you.
Any other council, yeah, Councilmember Turner, please go ahead.
Uh, yes, I I just wanted to ask, you know, if we approve this and we make this part of our objective designs guidelines, what options do we have if we wanted to change some of the things that wouldn't get us in trouble with with our HCD friends? Or arena counterparts? Do you know, Tom?
Um, I could try to answer that. I the the Site and Architectural Commission actually talked about this same issue. And I think that's why their recommendation is that they, this be revisited in six months to see how these are working. Um, it's not my opinion that anything we've written right now would cause any problems with HCD. I would think these are all objective. They're measurable. Everything is here. And any change, depending on how often the council takes things up for amending documents, that would be up to you and you, you know, need to face that same threshold to make sure that it's legitimate, has an objective way of measuring. But that that's my opinion. I maybe a staff member has a different opinion about revisiting documents and and amending them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, if I could add also, um, this is Diana, that we do plan, unless there's a a different direction from the council tonight, in accordance with the Site and Architectural Commission's recommendation to come back to both the commission and the council in about six months to kind of report on how the implementation is going and, you know, if there's any areas that that we should fine tune or modify. As a note on to the Rena and the housing element, on this, the status of the objective design standards has been the topic of discussion with our housing element consultant. And if we do have objective design standards in place, um, by the time we submit our housing element for certification later this year, that is looked upon by HCD as a very good.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for our attorney. Uh, given these guidelines, is it, if we were to come back and revisit and change them, we certainly could not make them more restrictive. Is that correct?
I'm not going to say that necessarily. I mean, one, these are architectural design guidelines. So, you know, what does more restrictive mean when you're talking about window sashes and colors and things like that? You know, it's sort of hard to ascertain whether that's more restrictive or just different. You know, certainly the the council retains the ability to, you know, make reasonable changes to its architectural and design standards. And typically, what we have seen coming out of HCD in terms of their And typically, what we have seen coming out of HCD in terms of their concerns with, you know, objective design standards is they don't want to see standards that unreasonably burden the ability to construct a dwelling unit. And as long as, you know, you're not making them so incredibly onerous that it's not affordable to construct any sort of housing, then typically you're gonna be, you know, sort of within the realm of your discretion. So I don't think necessarily that if you had some concerns that came up that were, you know, and a real legitimate concern that you couldn't change the design guidelines to modify them in the future.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? And I I just wanted, it's a simple question, I guess. How much of this is applied to existing properties? For example, if properties have a chain link fence on them, is that an issue?
This time, it's my understanding this is for new development or renovations.
And as present, it would specifically be applying to new development or renovations that would be for ministerially approved projects. So because of the direction and the recommendation from site and architecture commission, that they wanted to have the authority to, you know, retain their discretionary design approval for those things that they have discretionary design approval over. You know, the staff recommendation was to limit these objective design standards to ministerial projects.
Just wanted to make picture. Sounds good. Is there, are there any other questions? Councilmember Mayor Protemek, please go ahead.
Just one more time for me. Ministerial approval approved projects, those are essentially SB nine. Is is that correct? Or maybe said differently, can you define ministerial approved projects?
Short answer, so that would be the SB nine projects. That would also be projects that potentially, and I don't ever foresee an SB thirty five project, but an SB thirty five project and ADU projects, except for those that under state law, the city can't impose design standards on.
Got it. Thank you.
I guess we're going through this maze here, get to the end of it. Any other questions? If not, I'll take it to the public. Any questions from the members from the city or members of the public? If so, please raise your hand. I don't see any hands. Mr. Rattler, do you see any hands?
No hands up.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to council for discussion. I know, Councilmember Luther, you wanted to further some discussions on a matter. Please go ahead.
Actually, given the that we have the option to revisit this in six months and given that this is of limited scope, I think we can probably, I I don't have any strong opinion about the windows issue. So really nothing, I think we can start with it the way it's drafted. Site and architecture who sees these regularly has expressed that they think that's the starting point. So I'm fine with that and I'm for adopting the standards tonight.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I guess that was a motion. Councilmember Lawler had her hand up. Was that to support a motion or was that something else?
Well, it was actually to make a motion, but councilmember Luther did that for me. So, thank you.
Councilmember Turner seconded it. So she can do a roll call.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Luther?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Protemek?
I.
And Mayor.
Hi.
That motion passes by zero.
Sounds good. The next item on the agenda is for the city manager to execute a Mills Act contract for properties seventeen nine eighty five, over Los Angeles Road. Is that matter still on the agenda? I thought I saw something in the chat saying the the order that we're drawn. Especially if you could clarify that or I don't know who that.
Yes, just a little bit ago, and about seven thirty this evening, we also received an email from the property owners requesting to withdraw this application.
All right. So do we need to do a formal motion to withdraw it or we just don't consider it?
Mayor, I would, since it's a matter on the agenda, we do still have to take public comment. But otherwise, the council can simply just not act on this application pursuant to the applicant's request.
Thank you for, thank you for the clarification. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on it? If not, are there any members of the city council who wish to comment on it? If not, we'll take this matter off and not consider it, I guess. Move on to the next item, which is the formation of an emergency preparedness ad hoc committee. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Alahi. This is City Manager Steve Leonardi. I just wanted to bring this forward for council this evening. It was requested at the previous council meeting that or by a council member, I should say, that we reconsider the ad hoc committee for the emergency preparedness. As was mentioned by City Attorney Rudin at a previous council meeting, when the ad hoc committees go beyond a one year timeframe, they become more like a standing committee. And I believe that the last time we voted to consider which ad hoc committees to have for this year, this one was dropped. And now it is being suggested or recommended that we reconsider forming this ad hoc committee for emergency preparedness. And that concludes my information. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff and councilmember Turner? Please go ahead.
Yes, I I don't have any questions, but I wanted to make a comment. The emergency preparedness ad hoc committee was actually formed in twenty eighteen. And at that time, there were three council members who went for cert training. That was Councilmember Lawler, Councilmember LaBové and myself. And see, what I want to request is that, well, let me, let me go back. Each city has their own cert program. Cert is crucial in the event of an area wide disaster like a major earthquake or anything that causes critical infrastructure damage. It could be a wildfire or it could even be a terrorist attack. Okay, so this committee actually helps to mobilize the neighborhood resources to prepare for such an event. We promoted, I remember with Councilmember Lawler, we promoted the formation of the neighborhood watch groups. We encourage people to volunteer for cert training in order to be prepared to deliver assistance to victims, organize emergency communications, right, your QRMS radio and to support our first responders. I think our city needs to have more cert volunteers. Recruitment is also a critical function of this ad hoc committee. As we get more volunteers from our neighbors, the police department will fund what we call incident command post. The only incident command post we have in Montessorino is on Dave's Avenue. These are sheds, these are emergency sheds, and only certified teams can access those sheds. Today, we have one at at Dave's Avenue. So what I'm asking the council to do is to bring back the emergency preparedness committee. City staff, for example, will not be able to provide these services. What happens during an emergency is that city staff will have to be at City Hall, our command center. So what I'm requesting is that for the safety of our residents and our homes, that you consider what is best for the community and reinstate this committee. I have served in this capacity for almost four years and would be pleased to continue. I would like to act as the primary representative for emergency preparedness committee. I've been holding emergence neighborhood watch groups, especially with a high crime rate that we're seeing right now. I had two meetings last week. I'll have four meetings this week. And I would like, if possible, to have Councilmember Lawler help in in this area because she's able to triage. So I would like to ask the council to reconsider this committee, bringing it back up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Any other, I guess you're doing both questions and comments at the same time. So if anybody else wants to address this, Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, you know, I think I think this is a good idea. I think we can certainly identify how many more certain members we need in our community. And we can do a lot of recruitment and we can really determine where we can put command centers. I think it's worthwhile another six months or what or the length of, I I guess it's a year. I think we can certainly identify areas that we can improve and our neighborhood safety is important. I would be happy to serve again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, discussion? If not, I think I I think it's 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 a good time to have it. And I agree with Councilmember Turner that we need to set something up. It's important to mobilize the neighborhood and I know Councilmember Turner is very efficient at mobilizing the neighborhood. So I think she'd be ideal for chairing this committee and being the primary on it. So I would suggest we do set up the committee and have Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Lawler on it.
Oh, will I make a motion to approve then, please?
In a second. Yeah, I had a hand up from Councilmember, Mayor Protemek Check. And then also from Councilmember Luther. So Max check, I think you had your hand first, but you put it down. Are you still want to speak?
I think you should take public comment on this.
Okay. Yeah, I think that should be taken before you vote. So any any member of the public who want to address this? I don't see any hands up. So we'll bring it back to council. Oh, I guess there is one hand up. All right. And who is that? Yeah, I can't tell who it is.
It's Nancy Pearson has her handle.
Yeah, Miss Pearson, please go ahead.
Hi, I I just thought I would comment. I do think that it is a very worthwhile thing and important for us all to be involved with the cert program. I know I personally, being a resident of Montessorino, enrolled in it, geez, pre COVID. But unfortunately, I missed the very last part to graduate from it because I had a friend pass away and I had to go to a service. But but I do think it's a super important thing and I and I do want to encourage that. Thank you. Thank you all for your service, by the way.
Thank you. And I I guess we will need people to get involved. I think the Kivani's Club can also help with that. That'd be great. Councilmember Luther. You had a hand up, Lucy?
Actually, I had my hand up to remind you about public comment. But also I do want to express, and I think that the most important thing that we do as a council is really focus on the safety of our community. And then second probably is our budgeting. Councilmember Turner has done an incredible job and and put great focus on this issue. Really brought it forward during all of your years of service here. And to the extent that she's willing to continue to do this, I think that's wonderful and that she should head that effort up. And if her choice of a person to work with productively is Ms. Lawler, I'm completely in support of the pair of them doing that job. So that's my comment on it. And where I stand, I'm ready to make a motion that we adopt the committee and populate it with those two.
Is there a second? Mayor Protemek Check is seconding that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Luther?
Yes.
Mayor Protemek Check?
I.
And Mayor. And that motion passes by zero.
All right. Thank you. And then we finally have an excellent item that I've been waiting for for a while. I think we all have been waiting for to hear our city managers' reports. If you could, please go ahead, Mr. Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor. So before you this evening is a version of a city manager's report. This one reflects the quarter of October, November, December of two thousand twenty one. And in the report, you can see the amount of building permit activity we had, as well as some of the things that you do not receive from the normal course of, you know, council business during our council meetings and or emails and or through our news messaging or e-blasts or other items. You know, basically operational things that the city clerk is working on, that the city planning department is working on, the engineering department, et cetera, et cetera. And try to include all the departments. I I did not put in the finance department on this issue because they do issue, they do report on the budget annually and semi annually, as well as through the auditor's report, as well as the every meeting we have the warrants list, et cetera, et cetera. So they pretty much extensively report all the time. This is more or less, you know, what is happening behind the scenes, again, that may not be visible to council. And of course, because it's been a pandemic for the last couple of years, of course, many of you have not been able to visit City Hall and interact with City Hall as much as you ordinarily would have in the normal course of before the pandemic. With all that said, you know, going into paragraph one, we had a speaker earlier this evening, Mr. Levine. Council has been, or excuse me, staff has been working on this idea for a while to present to council, probably at next budget hearing about hiring a code enforcement slash building inspector person. I think this would greatly enhance the city's service for things like which Mr. Levine had described, where you get sort of people before hours, holiday hours, weekend hours, who are, you know, doing construction and maybe bending the rules a little bit. And rather than calling the police out, which is the normal course of action, perhaps we could have this building official slash code enforcement, all in one one role, handle those activities and and make them a permanent staff member. Currently, right now, we have two contract employees from CSG handling that role. Staff will perform a cost analysis at budget time and, you know, presented to council to show what the impact on the annual budget would be. And and that's that's the goal, but this is something we've been thinking or considering for a while in order to, again, enhance service for the community and enhance the quality of life for residents. You can see the next paragraph regarding the neighborhood improvement project. As you know, and as was mentioned by Mayor Alahi earlier this evening, the Xena Avenue project was completed in December. However, Natalia and Clara are being worked on. As we speak, just started essentially yesterday, Martin Luther King Day, expected to last two months. We have other improvement projects coming up. LaRica Nada is coming up. I think a city engineer Khan will be presenting to council that project for consideration of bids in the spring, March, April timeframe. You can see there's the design of the Dave's Avenue Drainage Project and Pedestrian Improvements on Bruce and Vista. And there are other, as was mentioned, projects going forward for the PCI update, which is a biannual thing. I'm hoping that our PCI will reflect very well this time around, better than what it did two years ago when I started, which is where we want to go in the right direction, upwards of seventy. You can see in the city clerk highlights, of course, Michelle Estabio, as we previously knew her as Michelle Radcliffe, has been doing a wonderful job for our city. She is involved in many things, was very instrumental in helping us migrate to iCompass last year when she came on board. But she's also now helped the other boards and commissions, you know, migrate to iCompass. And she's keeping track of everything through there. Council approved the the amended records retention policy. That was a big deal that had been kind of gone by the wayside before this Estabio's tenure here and the records management project. She has been very active working in that area as well as engaging a deputy. And the records management project, she has been very active working in that area, as well as engaging Deputy City Clerk slash Admin Two, Loyzzi Gonzalez-Langorica, to help with her on that project. And of course, was assigned to Ms. Radcliffe by council direction, the C Click Fix project. And I think Ms. Estabio, I'm sorry, will be expanding on that later on this evening a little bit. As well as oversight of the city's website, again, the purpose of Ms. Estabio becoming involved in this is to incorporate all of the resolutions, all the records, everything can be accessed more efficiently through the website than it has been currently. So it's really part of the, you know, public information process and getting it all online and getting it so it's more user-friendly and accessible to the public. This was something that was launched back in October of 2020, but the new planning project tracking system. We started the electronic building permitting system. We wanted to add the planning project module to that. We hope to get a, a billing module added as well. But it's been very efficient for our residents to be able, and, and our staff to be able to track the building permits and, which will be the planning permits going through our system going forward. And it's a lot less paper intensive and it, the promise ultimately is any device anywhere, you can access the system. And if somebody wanted to check the status of their building project or their building permit or their planning project, they, they would be able to access it, as well as pay their fees online. That's the ultimate goal. And to have it all be electronic and, what can I say, manageable by staff going forward. City has also contracted with EMC for the housing element update. And we will be getting that, we will be beginning the outreach effort shortly. There is a postcard attached to this report. You could see this postcard will be going out, encouraging the public's participation. One thing that we do not want to hear is, I didn't know about this. We want the public to know about it. We have a website. The website's very informative. And we're going to give them every opportunity to participate, and I hope that they will participate. This is very important for our community. So this is basically, again, a snapshot of what's been happening behind the scenes for the last three months. And look forward to hearing your commentary on this report. We're available for questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonardis. And I think everybody on council appreciates you putting that report together. That gives us a better insight of what's happening back there and also allows us to see what else is going to be coming down the pipeline. Anybody have questions of Mr. Leonardis? Seeing none at this time, I guess we'll see if there's any member of the public who has any questions. I don't see any hands, so I guess I'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Luther, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leonardis, for the report. It is helpful to see what's going on, to have this visibility. And appreciate your work and staff work on both the report and on what you do. One comment I have about this is that if it's not already out, it should be publicized on the website and perhaps publicized by other methods next door, et cetera. Because this does give the residents some insight into the inside workings of what we do, the number of permits that are being processed, the various departments that are involved. So I think this is positive information that should get out there. I always like to remind residents that we tend to hear from them when they're upset about something, as we should. But we don't hear from them and they don't engage with the city when things are going well and we're doing the work that we're supposed to be doing and the staff is doing the work you're supposed to be doing. So I'd like to see that positive publicity get out there to the public. So look forward to you touting the good work a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawler, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Mr. Leonardis, this is a great quarterly report. I really enjoyed it. And Councilmember Luther makes an excellent point. We should definitely have this at minimum up on the website and out to the public so people can see how busy we've been. And I really look forward to seeing the At Home in Monteserino website and hopefully get people engaged. So thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, I, I think it's, it's good. And you, you may want to emphasize the savings on the Granada project on the streets. It's about $500,000 that I alluded to earlier on, because that's a combined team effort. And we all here as a team to do whatever is best for Monteserino. Council, Luther, you still have your hands up. Did you have any other comments?
No, I was trying to put my hand down, but since I'm speaking now anyway, I guess I would make the motion to accept this report with the additional addendum that should be added that your, your Hon. Mayor just pointed out regarding the Natalia savings. So thank you, and I will make that motion.
Thank you. Second by Councilmember, Mayor Portemekcheck. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Luthol?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Mekachak?
Aye.
And Mayor Lahe?
Aye.
And that motion passes, Spencer.
All right. Now, our next item is committee commission reports. So this, and then is this council member comments. I think we can combine them. So if anybody wants to comment or give a report on any committee, please go ahead. Mayor Portemekcheck, please go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to let council know that with respect to San Jose Water Company and their application for the general rate case, that the evidentiary hearings were over and San Jose Water Company filed their brief in as well, so did W. Rates, which is in opposition to the, to the rate case, and I'm broadly speaking. And San Jose Water Company and the Public Advocates Office entered into a preliminary settlement agreement that is now before the commission. So I wanted to give an update on that. And then I also don't know how many of our residents in city council received a letter from San Jose Water Company describing the drought surcharge and how that's going to work. I found it personally a little confusing and I had to sort of work through it and maybe I'm just slow. But what I'd like to do is, I'd like to invite John Tang from San Jose Water Company to talk about the drought surcharge and answer any questions that people have. I don't want him to talk about water rates. I just want him to, to let our residents know how the drought surcharge is going to work, because it's different from last year or from last year, from several years ago. And to me, it's confusing. So if other council members think that's a good idea or a bad idea, I'd like to know. But then we could invite him to do a presentation just on the drought surcharge.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I think you did great work on testifying. I think you spent about a day or so with the Water Commission. And that's probably a good idea. I don't know if John Tang is still talking to you or not, but we'll find out. Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I actually agree with the notification we got from San Jose Water. It was, it was about as clear as mud, in my opinion. So I think it would be great if we could have somebody come and explain to our residents exactly what, what those tiers mean. It, it really wasn't that clear. So that would be a great idea. And I have another comment regarding the construction hours. And Mr. Leonardis, you can answer this for me. Do we post in, you know, do we post the construction hours on the construction sites?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Lawler. I do not know for sure. I will have to answer back to you on that, but I will find out and I will send the council an email on that.
Okay, because I think that would be a, a very easy thing that we can do right away, big sign with the hours. And I don't know if there's a possibility to suggest that there would be fines after several infractions, but anyway, that might be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, I just got word that they are posted on every permit that we issue. So I thought that would, was the truth.
I'm, I'm talking about
But they are not necessarily posted on a poster. Okay. Yes, I don't believe they're, no, we don't have them posted at the site. So what we will do is we will look into what's required to, if we have to have a hearing about a sign posted at every site showing the, the construction requirements and hours and those types of things, that could be something we could bring before, back before council in the future.
Okay.
Adopting a signage, amending the ordinance to adopt signage.
Yes. Thanks.
Any other comments? And I, I guess city manager Leonardis, you're going to look into converting Mr. Tang to come speak before us and explain his, the, the new water rates.
Yes, I will invite San Jose Water in to do a presentation about the new water rate.
Sounds good. Any, any other questions? If not, I, go ahead, Councilmember Luther.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if I should speak up now or later. You had mentioned council member comments. And Mike, mine is really an overlap between comments and future agenda items. But since we've just taken the city manager's report, I guess this is probably the appropriate time to segue between those two. So I'll go ahead and, and offer a comment as relates to future agenda items. So I, I want to address the, as a future agenda item and a comment, the issues that have been raised by our citizens today about divisiveness, about defending Councilmember Turner, about attacking Mayor Protemekcheck. And first, I want to point out to all of these people who showed up and attacked the council that says we're not doing our job, that that's rather upsetting because we are doing our job. We've had a detailed discussion on this subject matter. We've gotten advice from the city attorney on this issue. And this was hashed out in great detail when it was first raised to our attention previously. And we can talk about that appropriately. However, this has just come up as an issue and been made a news story in the last few days. And for the public to imply that we are not doing our jobs is quite offensive. And I understand those people showed up because they were asked to defend Ms. Turner and they believe in Ms. Turner. She received a large number of people who voted for her. And quite frankly, we could spend hours with every one of Ms. Turner's supporters and every one of her detractors rehashing the election and her behavior in voting out of state when Oregon does have a clear law, which is seriously problematic, but not for us here on this city council and not in California. It's problematic for Ms. Turner in Oregon, and she's dealt with that. It's problematic because there is an underlying constitutional question. And it's problematic because we'll never know whether she told us the truth about what, how she voted and what she voted for, because our votes are secret. So that is an issue that's in the past and it is essentially a non-issue. It's divisive of our city. We heard a lot of talk about Republicans and Democrats. That's offensive. We are nonpartisan on this council, and this is not a Republican and Democrat matter. It was an election matter. It's a personal matter between some people who were involved. And it is divisive of the community when we hash it and rehash it. I would point out that we have all just signed off on the new updated code of conduct as we do every year. That code of conduct holds us to the highest levels of professionalism and following the law. And I would suggest to Ms. Turner that she needs to evaluate herself to make sure that she is following all of the laws of this state and anywhere that she claims residence. I would also point out to Councilmember Mekachak, who's been the target of many comments today, that the other part of our code of conduct is to behave with the highest level of professional towards other council members. And I expect that everyone on this council will be doing so going forward. So I am actually going to strongly request that we do not bring this issue up again. We have had legal advice regarding the issue. If there are members of the council who really wish to go through this again, who wish to consider some level of first discussion and then potentially taking action against various members of our council. Certainly, any two members of the council or the mayor himself can put things on. But this is something that I think we've dealt with and I think has been put to rest. And it, I think it is nothing but divisive if we're going to hash it over further. So those are my comments and my suggestion that we do not have it as a future amendment, future agenda item. We've got a lot of work to do on the budget and it's coming into budget season. So let's get to work for the city. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Turner. I'm sorry, Lawler, you had your hand up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I agree this is a non-issue. We addressed this earlier in the last year. This is a non-issue and has absolutely no bearing on how Ms. Ms. Turner's ability to govern. It has no bearing on this council and it has no business in our city. I therefore agree with Councilmember Luther that this not be agendized. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I guess I have been very silent for far too long, but no more. This evening, I'm standing up stronger than ever to reveal the truth. I want the public to know the truth. The truth is, I never voted for the same candidate twice, and I never voted twice in any election. I voted in Oregon on local issues that affect my life and my second home. I didn't try to cheat or defraud anyone. Just like when you guys get a traffic ticket, you didn't intend to, to defraud anyone. You got a traffic ticket by accident. Okay? I didn't know that there was a rule against it, and that rule is slightly unconstitutional. I came to an agreement with the state of Oregon and paid my dues. When you guys get a ticket, right? And you pay for your ticket. Do you have to come to council? Absurd if anyone demanded an elected official to resign or come back and participate in every process. We should make it such that there are no vicious attacks on me, unconscionable and unjust attacks that I have experienced this last week with you guys. And I need to say that because I have been quiet. Mr. Mekachak, you have been abhorrent. I saw your letters. You called Oregon. You told them. I didn't know anything about this, but yet you knew because you wrote those letters. You're a liar. I asked the public to listen and to hear me when I say it was an honest decision. And I do the right thing by voting, and I don't think it's wrong. Thank you.
Yeah, I was hoping it wasn't going to get down and dirty because council is
Dirty. I'm expressing my frustration with the council. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your frustration and we appreciate everything that people have said in support of you. But I think if anybody's causing any divisiveness at this point, unfortunately, it's not Mr. Mekachak. He didn't bring it before council, and you have. And you, you brought your people who basically come and accuse the council of everything under the sun. It's like, you know, putting up a straw man and then beating them down. I, I was hoping that would not come to this council. We did not put it in the agenda. And for the reason because, you know, we want to go forward in a professional manner. So I hope if you have any more frustration to express, this is a good time for your council, Councilmember Turner, express it and hopefully you can move on. Do you have anything else to say to clean up your anger? All right, Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have another future agenda item, but this may already be in the works. Thank you, Mayor. I do have another future agenda item, but this may already be in the works. If you recall in 2019, or yeah, in 2019, we went over our, our fees, our fee schedule. And I think we agreed that we would revisit it in three years. So it's about that time. So I'm wondering if Mr. Leonardes, if we're going to be looking at all of our fees and, and addressing any changes that need to be made.
Leonardes, I, I brought it up too because it's been a while since we did that. And my understanding is ours are the lowest fees. And we're talking about new houses, basically new construction. Because that's where it makes a difference. On existing permits, it probably doesn't make that much of a difference. But we do need to get our streets up to par and make sure we do all the things that are necessary to provide emergency preparedness for the city. So if you can bring that up.
Yes, and I will be meeting with the members of the finance committee later this week. And it's the first step in this conversation. But I appreciate Councilmember Lawler bringing this forward because there is the totality of the fee schedule, which was, as mentioned, something should be looked at every two or three years.
Thank you, Mayor Portem, Megachuck.
Thank you. Regarding future agenda items, I would like to have a presentation from Los Gatos Monte Sereno PD on flock cameras. And I think the first presentation should be information only, where they would explain to us and, and our constituents, how the flock camera program works. And at the end of that presentation, I think that it would be good for council to determine if we wanted to put it on a subsequent agenda so that we could take action on the item. So information only meeting. And then based on the results of that, have an action item on subsequent meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. You're on mute.
Sorry, I would like to put in the agenda item, the SB nine and SB 10 state initiative that is going on. I would like somebody to come in and speak to the council about that. It's supposed to be hopefully on the ballot November 2022. The other, the other future agenda item and, and maybe I should take this offline is to see if I could submit Mr. Megachuck's letters that he submitted to the Secretary of State as part of the record. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? If not, I guess our next item is just to, we've already covered future agenda items also, it looks like. And you've had the city manager's report unless, I'm sure you have any other report. No, so we have the city clerk's report now?
Yes, hi.
Thank, thank you for waving your hand.
No worries. Thank you. Just wanted to give to, well, an update on the seat click fix application. I've met with the developers and we are currently in the phase of getting our developer account through Apple. Apple has a process to, to get a developer account to create the app. And we're just waiting for the okay from Apple to start that. Once we get the approval, the timeframe that seat click fix thinks that will be live will be about six to eight weeks. So during that six to eight week time period, I'll be working closely with seat click fix on the app design, marketing materials and just the game plan and how we can get the app out to the residents and to the public. The second item I wanted to talk to the council about is the city planner, Diana Perkins, and the site architectural commission would like to have a joint meeting with the city council. They're looking at February 24th, either at 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM. And we wanted to check your availability on that date and time. So if you can send me the email or if you know, right now, let me know and we can get that by my, and in the books.
So is, is that a regularly scheduled meeting for the city council?
No, that is on a Thursday. So it would be a special meeting jointly with the site and architectural commission.
So you want to do a joint meeting with the city council and the site and architecture?
Correct.
Okay.
So the date we're proposing is February 24th at 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM. And that is it for me.
So do, do, do you all want to check your calendar to see if that works for us or, whether they can, February 24th?
Yes.
That's a Thursday?
Works for me.
Figure out if I have a meeting on that, the cities association meeting is on now. All right, how about everybody else? And I'll, I'll probably have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, you could just shoot me now, let me know.
Okay, actually, why don't you go ahead and send an email to everybody and then we can respond to that.
Will do.
Thank you. Okay. Any other?
Mayor, Mayor, this is city manager Leonardes. I just wanted to bring up, there is a neighborhood watch meeting on January 27th. That's Thursday at 5:00 PM. And I don't think that conflicts with what Ms. Radcliffe just proposed. But the police chief field will be there and they will be having some discussion about flock cameras, as was mentioned by Councilmember Megachuck. So I just wanted to bring that to council's attention. I will email the details as I get them.
Sorry, Mayor, city manager Leonardes, that is specifically for the Twin Creeks via Caballero project.
Yes, I understand. It'll be, it'll be conducted via Zoom and it won't be a noticed council meeting. However, in the past, when we had a neighborhood watch meeting for the Greenwood neighbors, several council members were in attendance. And I just wanted to make sure that the council had, you know, equal opportunity to attend via Zoom. Should they chose to do so, I would of course consult with Mr. Rudin if there was any issue with noticing on that. But I assume you wouldn't be attending in your capacity as council members, but you, if you were interested, anybody could attend as a resident, I guess.
Yeah, we also got to make sure that the Zoom capacity is there. The capacity for the number of attendance.
Okay, well, I will, you know, nevertheless, get the, the details from Ms. Jackie Rosen will get it all figured out.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have attendee hand up. I'm sorry, just let me just make sure. Does any member of the council have anything else to add or subtract? If not, I guess we'll go ahead and ask Maria Lee if she has some final comments at this point.
Yes, so I object to the calling us as being divisive. It's because we know what is going on is really unfair to Rowena. And that is apparent witch hunt did by Megachuck. This is not against Megachuck or attacking him. This is a result of what he did personally. If any of you council members or even you, Mayor Javet, is approving of the witch hunt, you guys are all complicit. Shame on you. Again, do not put words in our mouth. Do not twist the fact that you guys are doing witch hunt again, this Asian woman of color who is really doing her job to serve the community. Just because you don't agree with our choice, our vote, and that this is what you do. Putting her on the spot to be eliminated just because she doesn't work or she doesn't speak your narrative. Wake up.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, but for the record, nobody's doing that. And I don't know where you're getting that from. We don't have, is there anybody else who have any comments? If not, I think it's time to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all. Good night.